Councilman Scourgey is absent due to military leave. Councilman Livingston?
President.
Councilwoman Cross?
President.
Councilman Taylor?
President.
Councilman Monzo?
President.
President Scanlon?
President.
That's six here with one absence, Scourgey.
I have a report from the committees and approval of minutes from November 6, 2019, business meeting. Councilman Monzo?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I stand and ask for unanimous consideration of the approval of minutes from November 6, 2019, business meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. an ordinance amending COVID in the city of Binghamton, Chapter 410, zoning, modernize zoning regulations and streamline community planning approval process.
Anyone wishing to speak, please go forward. You have five minutes. See none, move on.
He says it's four.
What's that?
You said it's four.
No, he said four. Speak, you must speak for. Anybody wishing to speak on this topic, please go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, John Redd.
John?
John Solak, City of Binghamton, is this the one that the state's requiring? Is that what we're talking about? Because I don't have that in the...
No.
No?
These are the zoning, proposed zoning amendments that were on. This is now the third business meeting for which public hearing.
Okay. Where could I find the paperwork on it?
It's on the city's website at Binghamton City Council, the end of its first publication. I believe it's on October 23rd.
It's also posted again tonight, on the calendar.
On the calendar. Now, do you think that the public is entitled to a copy of this in front of them? Anybody think that legislation should know what we're talking about?
It's on the city's calendar under this meeting, as well as maybe on October, I think it's 23rd.
So we're a paperless outfit now? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Well, the zoning law is like 66 pages or more long, which is one...
Does any council person, when you have a multi-page agreement, do you like to have it printed out for yourself, for your filing cabinet? No?
You can go online.
You can go online? This is a city where it's 48% poverty, 50% poverty. You think that everybody can go online?
You can go to public libraries and go online.
Hmm. Go to the public library. So have you all read those changes, have you?
Both of them. They have a plan.
Although, as we know, public comments or public hearings got a question and answer session.
Okay, okay. How much time do I have left then? Since that wasn't a question, when does my public comment time start?
You have about three minutes, folks. We'll start the clock now.
You want to start the clock now?
No, we've got three minutes.
Oh, okay. Going to use the egg time? He has one of the best egg timers in town. This is...I've seen this before. I've seen it before. And I've seen community plans. Problem is the spot zoning, you know? You build up this...you don't follow the community plans. You don't take public input. And then all of a sudden, there's changes that are implemented. And I'm just going by my history with the city. There's no enforcement. So I don't know whether you're trying to make it feel, but let me ask you this. Well, it's not a question and answer. I'm assuming that this expands 68 pages, that this is an addition to the existing. No, it's not an addition?
There are some additions, but it's primarily amendments that are consistent with the common plan that the city has in place.
And what was the...what year are we talking about, the comprehensive?
The most recent.
The most recent. Well, I think what the city should do is when you pass this, you should deep score, deep score, and see how many violations, you know, what the enforcement is. And then you'll know. Then you'll know if you wasted a lot of time. But I'm glad to see that this is not...this is your initiative, right? It's the mayor's initiative? See, you're answering my questions anyway. You know, I'm throwing them out there, and you're falling for it. I knew, you know...
I always like to be close to my boss.
Well, you know, he probably went to a better law school than Paul Batista, that's for sure. And with that, I'll get there.
Anybody else wishing to speak on modernizing the zoning regulations, please go forward. See none, move on.
To clarify, the council's body wished to leave the public hearing open on the zone.
So the next public hearing we have is the proposed updates to the citizen, the city's citizen participation plan requested by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Anyone wishing to speak, please go forward.
John Solak, Anthony York, it's a pleasure to see three newly elected councilmen here. You know, you want to...there's all these people that, you know, are going to hit the ground running, but these people aren't being paid, and they're here. And that's...they're off to a good start, as far as I'm concerned. So God bless them. You know, back in the good old days, HUD used to take the entire public comment and send up to Buffalo. All the community development block grant went to Buffalo in the...there might even have been a stenographer back then. And what was interesting is we would catch people. That was a great way to catch the mayors and the council people when they would talk about the revitalization of Binghamton and all the good that they were doing. Because all we did is compare what they were sending up to Buffalo in the public comments, census figures, all that stuff. And, you know, they're caught dead to rights. But now edited comments go right. I mean, has anything I've ever said here in the last five years ever found its way to Buffalo? I mean, anything? Citizen action plan. Now, it's interesting that you do so much with organizations that you know so little about vines, for example. Now they want to build a three-story building. See, I'm not from a monopoly in community gardens. I'm not for taking an organization that uses little kids and has dinner parties for itself with fine wine and takes 80% of the money out of salaries for themselves. No, I don't think that's a community initiative at all. I think it's playing the game, you know? But the county runs their own community garden program. You just...it's very simple. They sublease you a plot of a land. I don't think you need vines. I don't understand why you have a 10-year relationship with vines. I don't understand why you're allowing them to go onto public sidewalks. This is a scam. It's a scam. Community gardens, people in the neighborhood with some packages of seeds growing things. It doesn't need administrative overhead. It doesn't need schmoozed. These people are fraud. They're a complete fraud. And any relationship with them has to be seriously questioned. What are you going to do if you need the property for any reason? What are you going to buy them out of their lease? People need to know more about all these nonprofit organizations because a lot of them are broke and dead broke. And if you look at their pension plans, they will be broke. And I'm talking about the biggest nonprofit agencies. 2023 is the year of reckoning. Urban League is broke. Was down there the other day, two or three days ago. They had the spreadsheets out. I asked them for their 990s. Everybody's broke. And giving them transfer payments without justification. Now, my rules are completely...every council person has to update 990, the audited form, before they vote on one dime. The executive director comes in before council, states where they live. If they live outside the city, forget about it. They're coming here to play poverty. Go back to Apple Lake and do whatever you want to do. Watch Phil Donahue or who's ever on there. But no, when the salary level of these organizations, where most of the money goes to the administrators, I'm against it. I'm against it. These are not community organizations. So, and we don't need government grants.
You have one minute left, sir.
Okay. They called me sir. Call me John. Call me Mr. S. That's what they call me in Las Vegas, Mr. S. So anyway, I'm for low overhead. I'm for honesty and integrity. I think every organization has to be questioned and questioned fully. And I don't think that having a bloated organization that's getting transfer payments from two or three or four levels of government necessarily does anything for the people on the bottom because all these programs are engineered to keep people on the bottom. Somebody wins the Lotto, and there goes the census trap.
Thank you for speaking. Anybody else wishing to speak on this, please go forward.
Hello. My name is Shauna Cole. I am domiciled in the First Ward. I'm also a libertarian, little L. I am not in the party capacity other than my convictions that I believe in individual action to solve our problems. And one thing I do not believe in is collectives. And I pretty much get the idea that that's what John was complaining about with these 501(c)(3) because when you really think about it, these 501(c)(3) who introduce legislation are usually just begging for money, right? And as Conrad had so eloquently pointed out a few council meetings back, that these 501(c)(3) are so great, you know, but they don't pay property taxes. Now, you really got to think about that, that these creatures of man's law have more rights than the people that make up that collective, right? Because the people who make up that collective, they're paying taxes like crazy. And by the way, 501(c)(3) does not mean that they do not turn a profit. It means that they do not pay shareholders. I say this having worked for United Health Services for, oh, about 12 years. In fact, I worked for Maria Mott Savage, whose husband was ousted by Giovanni's win of the First Ward for council. So I went to my corporate brainwashing. So I know all about these creatures. And as John pointed out, you know, these salaries for these not-for-profits, the ones who administer these corporations, the officers of these corporations are usually ridiculously overflated. And you can see this with like the Susan G. Komen Foundation or whether it's a more local 501(c)(3) that I won't point out, who's in the business of writing grants and then taking a cut of that, like a commission, off of the grants once the grants are approved and they get that check, right? I think I was informed that it was, what, 10%? That's a little screwed up. Because now it's become this money maker for people, in the name of the good, of course, you know, whatever you decide that the good is. And the last council meeting that I attended, I could hear people back here just absolutely disgusted about this money is being spent on, right? Just completely, we can do better things with that money. Absolutely, I believe we can too. But the thing is, is that that's different for everybody. So, you know, why don't we just stop getting into the habit of taxing people, taking their money, and then using it for the caprices of whoever happens to be elected and what they want? I mean, that certainly is very oppressive to the minority, isn't it? And when I say minority, I mean minority. I don't mean skin color or sexual orientation or gender identity or any of that stuff. I mean the people who are like, I don't want that. I don't want my money going to that. So I am very against every law that's going to be passed, unless it is, of course, pursuing an enumerated power in commercial activity like trade, keeping ports open, maybe not having potholes, as I had to do some front-end work on my mother's car because she had a pot roll bent her rim and lodged the brake pad, which ended up tearing out her rotor. That was fun. I did the same thing to a strut on my last car, $250 later. But it's nice that we have summer programs, you know, and it's nice that we can find money to put cops in the school, to take away from the core curriculum, to indoctrinate the kids. That all cops are good because it's so important that we have to push these things. So I could imagine if we continue down this path, what's going to happen? I see we have some Boy Scouts here today. Let me give you a very important civics lesson. Question all authority. Don't accept it. Just question it. Even your own authority to do what you do, including making laws or proposing laws as a collective.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic, please go forward. See none, move on.
Does anyone want to keep the public hearing open on civic participation plan that is required by, I should say, required and recommended by HUD that has been updated in over a decade?
Anybody on this board want to keep this open?
So we are motioning to close.
We wish to close the public hearings. Also, you did about the city's citizen participation plan.
The public hearing, I think, is closed now.
So now we have our final public hearing tonight. This is the proposed consolidation annual performance evaluation report, or CAPER, requested by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Anyone wishes to speak, please go forward.
As a reminder, I think you received a communication from the clerk's office this afternoon. This public hearing was not properly noticed on the fault of the newspaper that was advertising it, due to the fault of the clerk's office, and therefore, he knows the public hearing is open tonight. It's opening tonight. It needs to be reopened.
John Solak, now I know how waning it feels. You know, encore after encore, you've just got to go out there and please the people. HUD, HUD. You know, there was an article written in the Wall Street Journal. Don't take umbrage yet. I'm going to tell you what the article said. It was by a black professor who lived in Plano, Texas. And the title of the article was "How HUD Ruined My Hometown," something like that, you know, how Section 8 vouchers go on. HUD sounds like a good idea, doesn't it? Improving housing sounds like a good idea. But we have to look at the humanity. We have to see, is it...does new drywall, new appliances, new washer and dryer, does that lead to an upgrade in human behavior? Especially in this day and age where there's a lot of distractions and very little discipline. So is our relationship with HUD making the city more prosperous? You're going to put $800,000 worth of state money into a building that already had $200,000 in it. And the mayor says he was surprised when he found that out, you know? The mayor checks the record just going to the county clerk's office. You can see that a lot of this property that's gone to hell in a handbasket was sited, new windows were put on, you know? So there's no guarantee that a relationship with HUD will improve the city. And, you know, like everything else in life, people that know how to play the system get the benefit of the system. And the meek don't inherit this HUD stuff. It's the aggressive people. It's the scammers. You know, my aunt used to...my aunt was head of whatever they call the serato. I don't know if they have that board anymore. But one day in the 80s, they remodeled her apartment. And I said, well, you know, this is pretty good. You've got European cabinets, you know, new appliances. And she really...it didn't really turn around much. And I think what she was trying to tell me was it was the people. And the Binghamton Housing Authority used to have a slogan, "Good housing for good people." They dropped it after I'm on them, you know? And all one would have to do was look at the police reports and say, well, how good are these people? Look at the domestic violence reports, other things. How good are these people? Now, in theory, in theory, if we took people, let's say from anywhere, professional people, and we put them in the Binghamton Housing Authority, would they have the same problem? You know, I asked the mayor when he first took office, I said, would you go and couch surf at the Binghamton Housing Authority? Would you do that one night? Do nights? Oh, no, absolutely not. So the prep school kid from Rochester couldn't spend one night, because there was a lot of complaints. I was hearing them. Everybody in town was hearing them. Couldn't spend one night to get the couch. And I mentioned this before. Somebody in, I think, New York City spent, just recently spent a month or something like in public housing. So I want to make the city better, but you have to be skeptical because any landlord will tell you, and I mean, these are people that are professional people, you know, they put in those fake wood floors and everything else. You know, they rent to somebody that works at the hospital.
Yeah, one with everything.
And all of a sudden, they stay there a year or two, and the place is in shambles, you know? So let's not kid ourselves. HUD is not the answer to this city's problems because this city has been involved in HUD for many, many years. We have to figure out something that's greater than transfer payments, greater than just improving the ghetto. And I'll tell you what, if we could ever do a Wahata Minute once, I mean, Mayor Butch used to talk about the revitalization of Liberty Street. Used to talk about that all the time. He had a cable public access show. It's still rotten. It's still rotten. The only thing, and the most constructive suggestion that I ever had when Liberty Street was really, you know, Liberty Street, was to turn it into a movie set. Because that's what it looked like. It looked like a movie set. That one. Got a guy right here that can tell.
Hello, Shauna Cole, First Ward. I have been living in Binghamton for most of my life. My residence now, I moved into in 2006, December 2006, which is the old Ely Park Apartments. At that time, I had been living off of my savings. And fortunately for me, I had enough sense at the time to save money. However, I found it nearly impossible to pay for childcare and continue to work the hours that afforded me the lifestyle that I was used to. So there I got caught in the government trap. At that time, I was paying the most that you could possibly pay for an apartment in Ely Park. And then with the privatization, they gave everybody Section 8 housing. That said, being a poor person and having a Section 8 voucher, I'm very much against any of these programs because I see them for what they are. They're traps. They take from one hand and give to another arbitrarily based on really stupid stuff and my humblest of opinions. But here I am, trapped in the system. Because if I were to go back to work, well, there I am again with the state telling me and dictating to me what I have to look for in childcare for my children. But then there's the school, right? Because that's like free daycare, right? No, not really. I realized a few years ago, it was just an indoctrination center, that the standards had fallen incredibly low. And I'm thinking, well, gee, you know, what am I to do? You know? I'm getting hit on this side. I'm getting hit on this side. And everywhere I look, there's a roadblock standing between me and what I do. And it usually involves some kind of government edict and bureaucracy. So I decided to start homeschooling my children, effectively saving the taxpayer $36,000 a year for that free education. But being a renter in the city of Binghamton, I know pretty damn well that my rent is actually paying for that tax, is paying for that schooling, the school tax. So, you know, if you really want to help the revitalization of Binghamton, why don't you just get your hands out of everybody's pocket and allow them to choose how they spend their money, thus creating markets, thus spending it and creating the businesses that will then cater to their market demands, whether it be private schooling or whether or not it be the book market. I educate my kids myself for about $1,000 a year. Much of the stuff that I have purchased, I can use for years on end. So what I want to know is why is it costing $36,000? And then there's the property tax that's levied on people's homes, people's shelters. The 501(c)(3) don't have to pay property tax, so why do the people? That's another cost. But you all want to sit here and talk about housing for the poor and how we can elevate these people. I don't know. Maybe get out of their business. Maybe allow them to make adult choices and suffer adult consequences. Maybe remove the roadblocks so that way we can do for ourselves without interference or without guidance from people who only choose to serve their own agendas. So, John, I feel a lot of your sentiments. And I'm here tonight not only to address council, but also to address the people of Binghamton. Because the issue here is the more government we get, the more screwed up things get, the more poverty there is. But, you know, it's this very, very few though who benefit because they're in a position to give their friends jobs. And how do I know this? Because my ex-husband...
Yeah, one with everything.
Because my ex-husband, Brian Cole, was given a job by John Whalen. So, yeah, I knew he was kind of embezzling, but I couldn't get my ex-husband to turn him in because he was afraid of the unions. He didn't want to be blacklisted on the public union. But that's how things are. It's just abuse. And, yeah, you know, I'm speaking as a poor person. What I would like is, I would just like you guys to get out of my business. I'd like you to stop taking, even from my landlord, because in the end, I'm still going to pay if I'm paying rent. I certainly don't want people subsidizing my rent. But what choice do I have? Because no matter what I do, I'm still going to end up in the same position that I'm in now.
Thank you for speaking. Anybody else wishing to speak on the...
Anyone else who should speak on the capers, please come forward, please. See, none of what we're looking at is public hearing open. They should share and mention earlier, so move on to public comments, please. Anyone else who should speak, please come forward, you're respectful.
You signed a contract with a baseball team. Giovanni Scireggi's not here, voted against that to its credit. I warned you what you were getting into. And again, the county's been involved in hockey teams. When you signed this contract with John Hughes or his LLC, did you see that you have a copy of the contract with the league and with Major League Baseball? Did you see his contracts? I think the answer is clear, it's no. You didn't see his contracts. Now, one of the basics of contract law is what is... The party that you're dealing with, can they deliver on that contract? There are other counterparties involved. If I say I'm going to bring Paul McCartney in to Binghamton, the first thing you're going to want to see is my contract with Paul McCartney, aren't you? If I ask you for money to bring Paul McCartney in and say you got a contract with Paul McCartney? I hate to tell you this, I hate to tell you this. You have nothing. You don't have a contract with Major League Baseball, you don't have a contract with the league. And the mayor is on record saying that those stadium improvements had to be done anyway, and it would increase the value of the stadium. So you have absolutely nothing in this ridiculous talk about how you're going to go after somebody to try to ensure and save baseball is absolutely ridiculous because you don't have a leg to stand on. You got a surety arrangement with Mr. Hughes in case he defaults in any way? No, of course you don't, you just give away the taxpayers' money. Okay, since 1999, university, 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 this is all I've been hearing, public officials, university. I distilled it in 1999. I said, "Binghamton University is not going to save Binghamton anymore than New Haven saved Yale." So now we have this grandstand play. And public officials are failing. They had a tremendous loss yesterday. The established Republican Party lost the district attorney's race. And now, what?
They didn't.
They didn't lose the district attorney's race? Okay, he won. Anyway, this Republican Party is now going after the university that they were promoting. Dan Reynolds, "I'm not going to the university." I'm like, "Who cares?" Mayor David, "I'm not going to the..." Fred Akchar, "Not going to the university." Now, every time I talk about binge drinking, perhaps, the response comes back, you know, there's 17,000 students at the university. This is, the State Street crowd is a small fraction of them. And I remember Harvard College, Allen Ginsberg, and those people, you know. Came, Harvard College was 3,000 people then. So if you had 50 or 150 people, that was a big crowd. So the fact of the matter that no matter what happens at the university involves a few hundred people is no reason to put it on video and distribute it and try to discredit everybody else that's there and try to paint a picture. That's unfair, that's absolutely unfair, and it's ridiculous. Now, and again, they're the ones that have touted the university and our relationship. And this is a divisive effort to try to create a wedge issue for the next election. Town versus gown. A damn plot, those damn radicals. Elect Fred Akchar, elect Dan Reynolds, elect Republicans, they're going to save us. Everything's threatened. Only Republicans can save us. You see? Wait a minute, wait a... It's absolutely ridiculous. So I suggest that people tend their own garden and take care of what they're supposed to take care of on a municipal level. Let Hartley Stanger manage his university. They've got a separate police force. And the fact of the matter is, without Fred Akchar, I believe Binghamton University will be a better place and a more constructive place. But these things are setups. You know, I've been protesting for 50 years, I remember this. I told you this, a friend of mine, Sander Fugus, represented me in California in the seventies, was an original Berkeley free speech guy. And those guys looked like button-down guys, they looked like they worked for IBM. It wasn't later until Terry Rubina, those people came, that it became a free show. But if we're going to get anywhere in this, we've got to stop these grandstand stunts. I mean, it's just like me telling you now. Anybody that's clean-shaven in this room, I'm going to send a card when you run for political office, that you're against prostate, you're for prostate cancer. Look, you didn't participate in the growing of the beard. So let's end this goddamn stuff, you know? I mean, let's stop trying to provoke people to create a cell phone video.
Your time is up, sir. Anyone else who should speak, please come forward.
My name is Halv Reev. I live in Conklin.
Take a motion, Mr. Spender.
It's a move.
And I'm the wastewater, I'm the plant engineer for your wastewater plant. I just want to talk today a little bit about maintenance. There is an enormous amount of equipment being installed at the plant as part of this project. Equipment that costs a lot of money and should be treated as such. This involves maintenance at regular intervals as well as documentation of that work to satisfy warranty conditions. And I've said to this council before that the plant has some of the finest computerized maintenance monitoring software available in the industry. We have the ability to schedule maintenance based on calendar dates, run hours, instrumentation notifications, or observation. And we base those intervals on original equipment manufacturers' recommendations extracted from operations and maintenance manuals. Those manuals are owed to the plant by the contractor per spec O1640, the same spec that defines training requirements. Those man... When those manuals are not provided, we usually use training materials that we have. And when no training material is available, we go to the internet. It shouldn't come to that, but don't knock the YouTube approach because we have a lot of hyperlinks in our SOPs to maintenance videos posted by the equipment manufacturers. So it's like having a original equipment manufacturer rep right next to you while you're doing the maintenance. It's really nice software. So, but someone has to put that data into the system in order for it to work. And we've done that. When the city's project manager approached us in October and said that the city wanted a fully populated system by year's end, we put in the hours and we got ourselves ahead of contractor turnover. So we now have equipment in our system due for maintenance that we still don't own. We've asked for maintenance records from the contractors on that equipment, to no avail. Critical maintenance, such as changing in of break-in windows or retorquing after startup. Our records are incomplete without these. I shared our records with the city two weeks ago at their request because Jacobs had concerns that it was not being done. And I think that the project manager and the contractor were pleased with what they saw. So then why does the city take Jacobs at their word that the contractors are doing the maintenance? There's no proof of that to date. Last week, we were questioned by Jacobs on how we're handling the turnover of spare parts since it was observed that we have several open crates of spare parts in our maintenance shop. I explained that we put parts to inventory by equipment spec. And if inventory is incomplete, it would remain open until completed. If the contractors were held to spec O1640 and made to provide themselves a spreadsheet of all manufacturers' required spares, the deficiencies would be obvious. Instead, we are holding the contractors to the spec, and we will continue to. But we're there to run the plant and protect its assets. Jacobs is there to administer the contract. At this point in the game, I think we both need to focus on our own tasks. So whatever the plan, former plant officials have done to lose the trust to the owners, I hope that again and again, we've come here and made it apparent that we're doing everything in our power to earn that trust back. And with my time, if you guys have any questions, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Hi, my name is Brian Isak. I actually live in Hollis, Pennsylvania. I'm a mechanic at the wastewater plant. As we all heard last participating, the Jacobs Construction contract wants an extension of 1.9 million to take them to December 2020. Now, this is a company that is supposed to inspect and make sure that the contractors are doing their jobs correctly by using the correct pumps, pipes, fittings, hardware, and making sure the concrete is done correctly. And if it's not, it's supposed to inform the owners of any wrongdoings. We had an incident at the plant involving a contractor. The contractor was working by the D-Box, which is the distribution of the wastewater. There are nine slide gates on the D-Box. The decking that is around the gates that covers can slip off those supports, causing the deck to fall in. So yes, a piece of the decking did slide into the D-Box, and the worker was almost fell in. The worker caught himself and was able to pull himself up and out of the hole. And yes, the worker is okay, he's a little sore, but he is here to tell the story. Just to give you an idea of how dangerous this is, that Binghamton flow is about 12.3 million MGD, which is a million gallons a day. The D-Box empties into a 54-inch pipe, which calculates to about 3,000 gallons a minute. There is no way a human being would be able to survive. So what is Jacobs' role here? If they are to inspect and report to the owners, don't you think that a walkway over a dangerous area would be inspected? What else have they missed? One thing comes to mind is the digisters have wanted to leak test. I am one of the mechanics that would be tasked to fill the digester. But because Jacobs stated that they did want to city council, they believe them. But don't ask the people that the sewer board employs to run the plant. So again, I ask, what is the role of Jacobs Construction? Now, the D-Box was handed over to the plant. So when something is handed over to the plant, you would think that it's safe to operate and walk a walkway safe. I would like to thank councilperson Taylor in Livingston for asking the questions about being a conflict of interest. I know what was overseeing the plant, being built and bidding on a privatization of the management and workers of the plant. I know what was said at the business meeting, that it's a different division of Jacobs Construction, but it's still the same company, same CEO, same stockholders. So if you want to believe that they don't benefit from the privatization, then you must live in the greatest plan. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking, Brian.
Gary Edwards, I live in Sharm El-Brahim. I was at the business meeting and I just took two small little details from what was being said. One was from the mayor that when you guys were discussing Jacobs and everything, he told you guys that you can't have it both ways. You can't slow down and go fast. That was about the privatization of the plant. The thing I didn't get about that was he tried to go as fast as he could in the beginning, and then it seemed to stall out. So now he's backing up and saying he's going slow. But really, there's only one thing left to do, and that is to name a bidder and bring it in front of you guys. So I'm not quite sure why it has to go so, so slow now that we're two months past the deadline that was supposed to be brought to you guys, the winning bidder, I guess. So I was, I guess I'm just lost in words of why he would... Why he wants to drag this on? Why do we have to wait now? Are we waiting for the new legislation or the new city council men and women to come in to try to mix everything up? So I have to go through this for another nine months with the new people? Because I'd really not like to do that. The other thing that I took from it, you guys were talking about the not-for-profit and paying taxes on their buildings and whatever. We're basically a not-for-profit organization. If we have any leftover money, it goes back to the city and it's distributed from there, not only where it goes. So basically, you guys are trying to... The mayor is trying to turn our nonprofit into a profit. And that's another thing I'm not really understanding. If people are for nonprofits and keeping everything in the city, for the city, why we would be letting a company for profit come in and take over the land? I would really encourage you guys, before you leave, if we could get an answer. This has been nine months, if not longer. Everybody's had enough, to say the least. If anybody could push, could do anything to let us know what's going on. I mean, we've heard that it's not going to happen because there's no water there, there's nothing to hold it together, there's no glue. So let's just make it official, bring it out, say it didn't work, sorry, and we'll try again next year. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else who should speak, public comment, please come forward.
Sean Nicole. Boy, I have so much to say in so little time. As far as the poop plant goes, and I have to say poop because my kids will watch this later and they think it's hilarious when I say poop in front of government officials. Not-for-profit, these entities will still turn to profit. They just don't pay shareholders, that's the defining difference. Oh, and they don't have to pay property tax either. The NFL is a 501(c)(3). And look at the salaries of the players and everybody involved. But it's okay, because I guess those people, they pay taxes. So we create a creature of law. And that creature of law has more rights and privileges than we, the people, do. Got to see something wrong with that. As far as this privatization business goes, it's not privatization, it is outsourcing. However, I feel your concerns because I've been watching corporatization now for some time. You have these... First, you have the state in whatever capacity, whether it's a municipal corporation or a state corporation or a federal corporation, because the United States government is a corporation. They come in and they grant themselves a monopoly. Let's take water, for example, it's the treatment and the delivery of water. Then they demand that we put stuff in the water, like sodium fluoride, which is a neurotoxin. And they tell us it's good for us. And that's just not right. And then they manage somehow screw up this system that they have that they've granted themselves a monopoly on. So then they turn around and they'll quote "privatize" it, and they'll give it to like Nestle. And then Nestle turns around and says, "Oh, now we own the water." Right? So in some towns in the United States, they banned water barrels, rain barrels. Me being the tree hugger that I am, of course, object to this. People have a natural right to water. And that said, usually these things are done in what I call the totalitarian tiptoe. They're little power grabs that seemed so insignificant at the time. But cumulatively, they end up in a tyrannical regime, whether it's granting themselves the monopoly over water and then handing it over to a corporation like Nestle, or the problems in Flint, Michigan, or our poop. Because poop, right? Collectively, people decided, or a majority did, that they somehow had a right to collect our poop and to treat it. And we're all going to pay for this because collectivism. our poop and to treat it, and we're all going to pay for this because collectivism. However, in the age of composting toilets and septic tanks, I'm libertarian. I think your poop is your private property, and you're responsible for your own poop. No, I am not advocating anybody fling it at the president. You're responsible for your poop. So I hear the concerns. However, this is not privatization, it is outsourcing. And like I said, generally, it's a little small power grab on the way to privatization. Before you know it, there'll be some corporation marching in claiming that they own our poop. That said, I'm personally very upset, having been a laborer myself. I worked as a nurse's aide for 15 years. I was the one who, when Vestal came marching in, Vestal Nursing Home at the time, came marching in with their union cards. My coworkers would ask me, Shawna, what are you bringing at the union? Knowing full well how I am, and while I believe in, in workers' rights in light of the Ludo massacre of April 20th and the Triangle Shirt Waste Fire, you know, I, I, I hear the concerns. I, hey, I would have been the one fighting for a patient-to-nurse ratio that was reasonable, because sometimes I'd get stuck caring for 13 people. When we were, were never short-staffed, we were always staffing challenged, like it changed the situation at all. I'm not happy with the way these laborers have been treated and the dangerous conditions they have been in, whether it's been the, been the toxic gases from the anaerobic processes of treating feces, or just general unsafe conditions. I would think that OSHA would have some kind of standard as far as the specs go. Gears are a funny thing. You put too much torque on them, and it weakens them, it weakens the metal.
Your time is up, Liz. Thank you for speaking. Anybody else who wants to speak, please go forward. See you then, move on. Hollis, the not-for-profit agenda. Unit of ordinance 19-122, considered fighting Council Matson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance 19122.
Second.
This is a secret, an ordinance authorizing the sale of 1 Fayet Street and 157 Sesquahana Street to the volunteers improving neighborhoods environment, Vines, for construction of a two- to three-story building for offices and program. A motion to declare city council as lead agency under secret.
Second.
All favor.
All favor.
Aye.
Voice for him, sir. A motion to identify the proposed action as an unlisted under secret.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
A motion to issue a negative declaration under secret for the following reasons. This is a vacant lot. Vines is a non-for-profit organization committed to developing a sustainable and just community food system, as stated in its website. Vines currently operates numerous community firms throughout the city. The sale of the lot is for construction of a two- to three-story building for offices and program. This is a transitional neighborhood, and a local business is expected to have positive impact on the neighborhood. The proposed use is consistently with zoning for these adjacent properties. Development consistent with zoning will not create any negative environmental impact, and specific plans will be reviewed by the planning commission.
Second.
Roll call, please, Lee.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilman Matson.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Matson.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one ayes, that's correct.
Interduct, ordinance 19-123, considered fighting.
No, I was just. And now I can stand to ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance 1922. Second. An ordinance authorizing the sale of 1 Fayet Street and 157 Sesquahana Street to the volunteers improving neighborhoods environment, or Vines, for construction of a two- to three-story building for other, for offices and program. Thank you.
Questions or comments, Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Liberty Street was brought up during public comment today. On Liberty Street, there is a building called Lebar Community Center. And I think that if you went to most people in and around the Liberty Street neighborhood, they would have a very positive opinion about the Lebar Community Center and what it has meant to the community, what it has done for the community. Liberty Street certainly has its problems, but it has, in leaps and bounds, improved in a variety of ways, but more than any other, it's a community now. And that can really be attributed to the programming and community space out of the Lebar Community Center. These people have a neighborhood watch together, they do programming together, they have built a community together. And that would not have happened the way that it has without a place to congregate and the health of lifestyles programming that started it all. Now, what we're talking about today at the corner of Fayet and Sesquahana Streets is not necessarily a community center, it's a new headquarters for the expanding and amazing nonprofit that is Vines, but it will certainly have community space, and it will also have programming for the community. And we all know that this neighborhood in our city has also seen its ups and downs and its struggles. And I cannot overstate the impact that a new construction like this may have on the residents in and around that community, because the first step towards building a strong neighborhood is to build community between different residents and partners. Vines also does so much more than just community gardens. It's an incredible part of what they do, and they're ever-expanding, but they do so much in youth programming, in summer programming for young people, in education about healthy lifestyles and nutrition. As they expand their offerings, and we help them expand, that will only do good for the residents of the city of Binghamton. And let me just say, as a general defense of nonprofits, you know, the United Way runs, the Lebar Community Center, these are organizations that attack issues that government just can't, right? We don't have the resources to help homeless people, or to educate people on how to eat well and be healthy people. Every dollar in that sense is really impactful in a nonprofit organization. So I hope that the unanimous support this tonight, it would be, mean a lot to the fourth district, and we should encourage our nonprofit grassroots organizations to grow and continue to be increasingly impactful for our community at large. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Council Matson.
I have a little problem with this. My problem is, they're paying $10,000 for the property. The other problem is, we give them 15, 20, 25,000. 50,000 total, thank you, Councilman. So the money we gave them, they're giving back to us. So how are they really buying this property with our taxpayers' money? I'm having a hard time. I'd really like to hold this over, because I'm having a hard time considering it. And I really don't know if I can vote yes for it today. I'd really like to hold this piece of legislation over. If you have a second, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Ellen, second, Congresswoman. Councilman Livingston.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that from my recollection, when Emilio Delche, the executive director, came in, she said that there was a certain amount of grant funding that was coming in. So it's not, not necessarily just city money that's going into purchasing this property back from the city, as you framed it, but Vines does leverage their organizational capacity to bring other monies into the city. But actually, one of the, I don't know if I'm just limited to speaking on the motion to, to hold over, or if I can speak on the actual motion itself.
Speak again, please, Mr. President.
Okay. So I, I just, I was going to actually say something before Council Matson moved to hold this over. So Vines is volunteers are proving neighborhoods. I've been a volunteer with Vines for, I don't know, like a decade. And I've been involved in helping to start up community gardens, you know, whether it be knocking on doors in neighborhoods, because when, you know, a community garden gets started, it's basically an act of community development and civic participation. And I actually think it's important, because, you know, you're talking about, there's a type, well, what Shawna talks about a lot is the loss of trust of government. And I think that civic participation in non-governmental groups is all the more important in a time when people are losing faith in government. And I think that the work that Vines does is difficult to calculate. It's difficult to calculate the true benefits of the community, because, I mean, I don't know if we even asked Vines how many volunteers they engage with on a yearly basis, and, you know, the sense of pride and ownership that people feel in their, in their neighborhood when they, when they engage in volunteer activity, and when it produces something so tangible that they can walk by every day, you know, they can remember the brick that they put in, in that patio, or they can remember the fence post that they landed. You know, it's just a reminder of, you know, how we're all trying to make the neighborhood better together. I get that this is not just a philosophical exercise, or an exercise in ethics and civic participation, you know, we're talking about financial matters. I think that pulling a blighted property off of the city's hands and turning it into an asset for the community that helps turn the community around is also something that's pretty difficult to calculate, and I've read studies where they, they try and calculate the exact monetary value to, to a city. You know, so it's not just a matter of, is this, is this property going to be taxed or not, but is it going to increase the value of, and really increase the value of that neighborhood? Again, it's something that's very difficult to calculate. Now, we're talking about Vines building an office building. Can't really think of too many buildings that get built in that neighborhood, or anything that's got built in that neighborhood recently. And I think that it's really going to make people feel good about the neighborhood that they live in, to see some new building coming up, to see that it's not just the city making an investment, but we've got a nonprofit organization that is truly homegrown, that came from, from Binghamton, from, you know, from seed to tree now, that's bearing fruit for the community. And I think it would be a shame to, to just look at this as a fiscal matter, you know, to really take into account the larger impact that Vines has on the community, and it is pretty necessary. And, I mean, obviously, if you guys want to, want to hold this over, it's your prerogative, but I think that Vines clearly demonstrated their value to the community, their value to the city, and they're, they're trying to leverage all of what they've built to build something, something more than just garden beds. And so I'm going to encourage my colleagues to table a motion, pass this legislation.
Can I? Sure. All right, Councilman, you said, yes, they've got grants coming, but the grants are for the building to build. They're not for buying the property. I know for a fact that Shenango Supply and New York Auto Radiator would like to buy that property also. And we've been talking with, I have been talking with Randy over at New York Auto Radiator, and this city would not sell that property and the, and the gardens behind it. So I know two businesses there were willing to buy this property. I know that for a fact, because I've spoken with them. So I don't want to say Vines isn't good, Vines is very good. They do help a lot, but I'm having an issue with this right now. And if we don't table it, we need a majority to hold it. I'll, I'll know.
How's it going?
Right, we need a majority.
Councilman McCray.
Thank you, President. Okay, so there's a property, there's other people interested in the property. This is first time, pretty good. All I gotta say is that for Vines, you know, what I said last time, my daughter works at Vines. Vines works for low-income families. They teach kids how to work, they teach kids what they need to know so that they can get a job. It also led to my daughter going to SUNY Brooklyn, which she just graduated with a 4.0 in ecology, because she went to Vines. If we don't show our kids something better than just what's outside the door, they're never going to know what's outside, outside the door. We got this to start somewhere, and Vines started it, and they're doing a great job. And it's not only community gardens, which I've led my community garden on Murray Street for several years, it's also timeshares, which I've participated, my children participated. They fed my children for years. If you don't know what a timeshare is, you can get a very, you can get a box of fruit or vegetables for a very low rate, and it can feed your family. And you can afford it. It brings a lot of fruit, fruits and vegetables to people who don't have vehicles, who don't have a way to get to the grocery store. So if anything, anything that's going to provide healthy food, provide healthy minds, good work ethics, don't we want our kids to grow up and have a good job? Don't we want them to be able to, you know, be able to function in corporate America? Because they will have to at some point. This is showing them how. Speaking of corporate America, since you guys like corporate America, you know, it's not a bad thing. I'm just saying, okay? Tell, let's just say, you need a building, you need an office. I have two nonprofits, I'm functioning out of my home right now. It's hard to get grants, it's hard to get volunteers, it's hard to get grants, interns, anything, when you don't have your own building. It's, you know, so if you want to table it, that's fine, but that's why you need somewhere else to go, because this needs to happen, and we're already making these opportunities. Thank you.
All I'm doing is to ask him, ask him to hold it over for one more reason. That's all I'm asking.
Councilman Pepistre.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was on council when Vines first came to fruition, and at the time, I was really not for it, because they talked about community gardens growing up. I remember, most neighbors had a garden, and they would grow all the vegetables for themselves and their families, and more often than not, they had a abundance, and they would share with the neighbors that didn't have a garden, couldn't grow a garden. And to me, that's a community garden. No. Vines, they wanted to put a couple of gardens in low-income areas where these people were not, where the people that were living there were not able to, they didn't know how to grow, teach them how to grow vegetables, teach the kids the work ethic of watching something grow to a point where you can actually eat it. And I think it was, it worked out very well. And you're right, it's a grassroots operation, and they've been able to go from one garden to, what did they say, maybe 15 or 30, but quite a few. what'd they say, maybe fifteen or thirty, but quite a few in different areas of the city and outside the city at this point. But that's, that's the point of it. They're grassroots, and they, and they had a mission, and I think they've accomplished it. Uh, they have a place. You might be outgrowing them, but they do have a place to operate them. So if they don't get the spot, doesn't mean that they're going out of business. Just means that they're, they're not growing. And sometimes when you grow from a community-based grassroots volunteers, which that's what they all were, volunteers, to a building where you have, uh, directors, assistant directors, secretaries. Now, like most nonprofits, all the grand money that you're trying to get is to pay the staff, pay the, the, uh, the bills and the maintenance. And that, that much less money that goes into that, into the, uh, the mission of your, of your original, uh, that you originally tried to start. And I don't blame anybody who's wanting to go. When you're in business, and you, you start out with a small business, you're always looking to grow it, so that, uh, it's just a natural, natural, uh, progression. But for nonprofits, when you, when you, when you're, uh, a non-for-profit organization and you continue to grow, um, it's a, it's a little different than, than a private business trying to grow, because they wanna become more profitable, so they can hire more people. Uh, and it just, that's how people can come from thousandaires to millionaires. I mean, it's just, and, and take a lot of people with it, and, and, and force it. Um, so I'm, I'm going to second, John said. The other thing, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention was, the discussion came up about if you're going to build a building, and it's not a blighted property, it's a, it's a vacant lot on the corner, which we tend to play the front. And I hadn't heard that there was other people that were interested in buying it, which I think throws another, you know, it's another, uh, thing we haven't looked at. Uh, but my initial, uh, a meeting with Vines was to discuss paying a pilot, a payment of taxes. If you're putting up a new building on this particular corner, would it be possible that you would, well, we care, because we can't force it to pay. Pay, a payment of taxes for the fact that you started, and we have been, uh, we have been very generous providing water services, manpower, public works, and recreating parks and recreations to Vines. So if they're looking to grow, whatever entity, I'm not sure where they're looking to go, um, paying the pilot, uh, if they were to agree, which is a much smaller, uh, part of the tax than a, uh, regular business would be paying, I thought would be a good gesture on their part. But if you have a business that's looking to expand, and they want their property to be, it's gonna be a commercial, taxable, uh, property, that, that's something to think about.
Hold on. Hold on. Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to respond to councilman Motzo's initial concern. Uh, I, I can't speak to any other points, but the, the annual CDPG, CDAC process where Vines can get money from the city, that goes directly to the summary of the program. So they couldn't use any of that money for, for this construction, or for this, uh, purchase of property. I can't speak to any other money that they may or may not receive, but, but that's, that's the nonsense I have to share on that topic. And then in terms of, uh, councilman Pax's response, I think, obviously, you have the right to, to hold this over to get more information. It's something that, you know, we've all exercised in our time on state council, and I certainly encourage you to do that. But let's make sure to, to take a step back and understand what we're, what we're, what we're either allowing to happen, allowing to happen here, or not allowing to happen. And as, as a councilperson for, for the area that we're talking about, I, I really do feel the need to reemphasize what, uh, what a new parking lot for a business means in an area with a lot of vacant properties. That's just a, a, I'm not saying that's what they, they may or may not want. But that versus a new expansion for a nonprofit with a community center, a community program component, let's think about what that actually means to the community. And I really can reemphasize what impact that could have, could, could have in this, uh, historically disenfranchised community. Also, councilman Pax brought, brought up the idea of, of businesses growing, and they grow to make more money. And I think that time and time again, this council has supported businesses that grow in this community with the intention of making more money. We, we've supported that with pilot agreements, with sales of properties, with so many different things. We've supported that time and time again, because that's great when a business is growing in a community. But, you know, an, an organization like Vines, they're, they don't wanna grow to make more money, they wanna grow to help more people. And I, I, I don't think that it's good, uh, government philosophy to, uh, to, to be so supportive of, of, of businesses that are growing to make more money, and then be so reticent when we're talking about organizations that are just growing to help more people. That's my take on the situation, and I hope that by holding this over, you get the information that you need, and, and I'll continue to reemphasize the impact that this could have in my district and our communities.
Councilman Motzo.
Thank you, councilman Taylor. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, is more information. And I will bring in letters from these two businesses that did offer to buy this, these properties. And they were turned down for, no, I'm looking, there's businesses there that want to be grown. That's a business that wanted to grow the same way that Vines wants to grow. It's six and one-half dozen of another, as far as I look at it. And they employ people too, just as Vines does. And Vines are paying the people to. So you're not gonna work for somebody for that, they don't. Yes, you have your volunteers. And I'm not saying Vines doesn't do a great job, they do a wonderful job. It's just, this is a piece of property that I just need to look into further, that's all. And I'm asking to hold it over.
Are there questions or comments?
Thank you.
Uh, this was, uh, held, motion to hold, hold over by councilman Motzo, second by councilman Pabst. This will be held over. Your district ordinance 19-123, considered for finance, councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 019-123. We would amend the 2019 fire department budget for annual student pay and temporary services.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the question.
Question be called, or called, please, please.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Your district ordinance 19-124, considered for planning, councilman Motzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance 19124.
Second.
Uh, first, we have a seeker on this. An ordinance authorizing the sale of 13 Vine Street to TNC Global LLC. A motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye. Motion to identify the proposed action as an unlisted under seeker.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye. A motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reason. This is a vacant lot, TNC Global LLC owns adjacent property. The property is to be transferred, must be maintained, and may only be used as green space in a small shed, and will require planning department approval. The property must be merged with TNC Global's LLC adjacent property at 11 Vine Street. This is a part of the city's side lot program to provide maintenance and preserve open spaces. Motion?
Second.
Are there a couple, please?
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six ayes, one answer, it's great.
I now extend an ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance 19124. An ordinance authorizing, this is, oh, I have to ask you.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of 15 Vine Street to TNC Global LLC. Call the question, Mr. President.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Your district ordinance 19-125, considered for planning, councilman Motzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask, I stand and ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance, uh, excuse me, 19125.
Second.
This is a seeker ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the sale of 41 Grand Street to Brigham Builders, Inc. A motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye. A motion to identify the proposed action as, as unlisted under seeker.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye. A motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reason. This is a vacant lot, Brigham Builders, Inc. owns adjacent property. The property to be transferred must be maintained and only be used as green space. Property must be merged with Brigham Builders, Inc. adjacent property at 23 Alfred Street. This is part of citywide, city side lot program to provide for maintenance and preserve open space. More voice for it?
We need a second.
We need a second.
Thank you.
Voice for it, please, please.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six ayes, one answer, it's great.
I now extend an ask for unanimous consideration on ordinance 19125.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of 41 Grand Street to Brigham Builders, Inc. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yes?
Councilman Lewis.
I just wanna point out, in light of the conversation we just had about, uh, Vines using a vacant lot, you know, the, the premise of the side lot program, my understanding of how it works is that, um, when the city takes over, uh, a vacant lot, or takes over a blighted property and turns it into a vacant lot, they then, um, reach out to the property owners adjacent to that lot. This is sort of the idea of the side lot program. And I, I guess I just wanted to point out to my colleagues that there's a assumption there that a vacant lot is kind of blight on the community, and it's, it's actually something that's difficult for, uh, the city to tackle effectively. These people aren't just, you know, lining up to build stuff on vacant lots, um, maybe turn it to parking lots, maybe, you know, add them to their, you know, to their property to, you know, have a shed up, or, you know, a garden, or whatever. Um, but, you know, the city owns, what I understand, over a hundred vacant lots. Um, it's not a problem that is gone away each year when, you know, the wrecking ball comes, and they, they knock down another blighted property. Um, but the problem of, uh, a vacant lot is still something that's a little bit elusive to the city to solve in a large-scale way. The side lot program is awesome, and, you know, what Vines does is also pretty cool. And I like the fact that they're looking to actually build something. Um, now that, now a little bit, you know, off topic, but I just wanted to point out that we already have this side lot program that's built on an assumption that dealing with vacant lots is not easy for the city.
Any questions or comments?
Call the questions.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Your district ordinance 19-126, considered for finance, councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of ordinance 19-126.
Second.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2019 city clerk and animal control budget to fulfill quarter, uh, fourth quarter invoice for the Grove County Dog Show.
Questions or comments on this?
Call the questions, Mr. President.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Interdicted resolution 19-92, considered for finance, councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of resolution 19-92.
Second.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Bigfoot for the use of fiscal year 45 CDPG funding, and an amount not to exceed $50,000 for an after-hours team program.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Interdicted resolution 19-93, considered for finance, councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of resolution 19-93.
Second.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Bigfoot for the use of fiscal year 45 CDPG funding, and an amount not to exceed $19,975 for summer program membership fees.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Interdicted resolution 19-94, considered for finance, councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration of resolution 19-94.
Second.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with various human services agencies for the use of fiscal year 44 CDPG funding, and an amount not to exceed $55,000 for capital projects.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Interdicted resolution 19-95, considered for planning, councilman Motzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous consideration of resolution 1995.
Second.
A resolution authorizing an update to the citizens' participation plan as requested by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Interdicted resolution 19-96, considered for planning, councilman Motzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous consideration on resolution 1996. Second. A resolution authorizing an amendment to the existing 2019 agreement with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Broom County. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question be called.
Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman McRons.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Pabst.
Aye.
Councilman Motzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one answer, it's great.
Interdicted resolution 19-97, considered for planning, councilman Motzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous considera, consideration of resolution 1997.
Second.
A resolution authorizing the Binghamton Fire Department to participate in Broom County Fire Mutual and Aid Plan. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Councilman Taylor.
Yeah, real quick, uh, just for those that don't know what the Broom County Fire Mutual Aid Plan is, that's just so that, uh, if there is a, a more serious, uh, fire in a neighboring municipality, or in the city of Binghamton, that different fire departments can, uh, help each other and assist in those situations. Or if, you know, if, maybe there's, uh, current stations that are busy, or trucks that are busy, or anything like that. So that's just a renewal of that mutual aid agreement between different municipalities in Broom County.
Questions or comments?
Call the question.
Question may call.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor McCruss.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Papst.
Aye.
Counselor Matzo.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
That's six ayes, one absence, great.
I had a communication from council members, and I will start with Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. So, if you haven't heard already, the Binghamton Devil's season, for a while, is totally full swing, so if you have the time, Friday or Saturday night or some week days, take the time, head to downtown Binghamton, go out for a bite to eat, visit a local business, shop a little bit, and then around 7 o'clock usually head to the Broom County Arena and go for a Devil's game. There's always amazing opportunities and specials, and just take the time to check out all the amazing things that you have to offer at downtown Binghamton. If you, if sports and hockey isn't your thing, on the 24th, I believe, just a few days from now, CERC is putting on an amazing holiday show in the Broom County Forum, if that's the thing, well, that's a great option. I'd recommend forehand going out to eat in downtown Binghamton, checking up, checking out a couple of local shops, really making an evening out with a girlfriend, with whomever. Make sure to always know what's going on in the community because there's a lot. The sewage plant staff here, as always, thank you so much for keeping us honest. I wish I could share my honesty with you about what's going on, but I don't have any knowledge, so my question is still out there. What the heck is going on? Why are we not hearing anything? Because right now, we are just leaving our employees out to dry, and they're worrying about if they're going to have jobs in a few months, and we're saying nothing, and the story just continues. And even more serious now, because at our council meeting on Monday, Jacob's Construction, our construction manager for the project at the Sewerage Treatment Plant, asked for renewal of their contract, but they're also one of the three bidders to privatize the management of the Sewerage Treatment Plant. And that could be a serious conflict of interest to have the privatization entity, the private company running the plant, be the same company that is engaged in the construction of the plant. And that possible conflict of interest becomes even worse when they literally have overlapping contracts at the exact same time. So, it's become more important now than ever to let the public and council members into this conversation that's ongoing, what is the plan with the sewage plant? It's okay if the details aren't finalized yet, but we should be in on the conversation, and we should not engage in any contracts that should be, that could be conflicts of interest. So, thank you so much for coming, and also to our Boy Scouts for coming. One day, maybe you can run for city council. Shawna would have a problem with that, but...
I have a problem with that, Brene.
Touche. But, thank you so much for being here, it's great to see you guys here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And Counselor Matzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, our council people that are elected. It's nice to see them, meet them all. Thank you to the Boy Scouts for coming. Shawna, it's nice to hear from you, John Solak, it's nice to hear from him, a lot. They're long-winded people, I will give them that, very long-winded. But, you know what, you make our meetings interesting. Thank you for the last eight years that I've gotten to listen to you. I really, I don't appreciate it, some of it's been very entertaining and some of it's been educational. Thank you. We have streets getting paved, yeah? It's just about the end of the season, so there is still construction work going on over on the south side, not just in my district, but Counselor Papst's district too. Next year, they will be closing the Conklin Avenue Bridge, and they will be tearing that out, and they'll be rerouting everything which we've been working on for the last four years, or five, we've been voting yes, 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 and finally got money for that. And then after that one, they are going to be closing the Belvin Street Bridge and redoing that one. So, there are two adjacent bridges that call Pierce Creek, that's what it comes down to, which is technically the creek is controlled by their own Corps of Engineers, it's one of our major flood controls for the south side of Binghamton and Binghamton. So, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, so there's still going to be construction going on on the south side, you're going to see improvements, you're going to have a new councilman, which is going to do a great job. I think Mr. Starr is a wonderful man, very intelligent, and I can't thank him enough for running, and I had a great time doing that one, so it was a nice one for him, and he really is, he's going to do a great job, very intelligent man. And we, have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matzo. And Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I know I've been talking about the conflict of interest as I see it at the Sewerage Treatment Plant, as Counselor Taylor mentioned, with our construction manager also bidding our operations management contract while construction is still ongoing and not going all that well. And I know that my colleagues, many of my colleagues have dismissed out of hand this notion that there is a conflict of interest, they're saying, well, they're two completely separate companies, one does the other doesn't do, and neither of them really know what the other one is doing. Well, don't take our work for it, take Jacob's work for it. So, August 29, 2017, the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority's long-delayed green line extension through Somerville, it's a project that a company called CH2M Hill was involved with. CH2M Hill is actually the operations management company that Jacob's owns, but they bought it for around, because like $3.27 billion, got it, 2017? So, as construction manager, this is all coming from an article from 2017, as construction manager, CH2M would oversee the contractor hired to build the 4.7 mile extension, a job that could run as high as $1.3 billion. In August, one of the companies in the bidding for that bigger contract, Jacob's Engineering Group, agreed to acquire CH2M, so this is actually all happening around the time that Jacob's purchased the CH2M Hill, it was an active contract that CH2M Hill had, and Jacob's wanted it on the action too. So, Jacob's Engineering Group agreed to acquire CH2M, which would make it inappropriate for CH2M to remain in the supervisory role. To avoid the potential for a conflict of interest, the contract with CH2M Hill was terminated, and CH2M Hill understood why this action needed to be taken. They didn't cry foul, saying, oh, this is ridiculous, we're a completely different company. They saw it as a reasonable move, and this is a contract that really dwarfs our operations management contract or our construction management contract. So, they understand it to be a conflict of interest, but they both be crossing purposes like that, just don't understand why this body doesn't see it that way, why this city doesn't see it. To see it that way, when there are a whole litany of different problems associated with crossing those purposes. And, you know, just in case people didn't know, we have pictures of CH2M Hill staff at Sewerage Treatment Plant going back months. They've been on and off from our side for months now, and, you know, the notion that the two arms of this company are somehow separate and not crossing purposes, it's not just something that is, that I would say is unreasonable, it's given a lot of credit to a large corporation here. It's something that the company itself won't necessarily agree with, and it's something that seems to be contradicted by what's actually going on at our Sewerage Treatment Plant. Want to thank the plant staff for coming again, and also Boy Scouts, is it Boy Scouts or Cub Scouts?
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, I never, I never did that, so, I know, see, you lost a couple of those there. It's also good to see the council people elected, Joe Burns, Suebeef Freeman, Angel O'Reilly here tonight, and, oh, I should, I may go say something nice too. I actually purchased my first house, it's a bank foreclosure, it's an abandoned house, been banned for about three years, and was doing some work insulated up in the attic today, and my code officer drove by, recognized it even though I had my ventilator on, and he called the vacant property officer and took the property off on the vacant property list right there, which was kind of cool.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And with that, have a wonderful, wait, is Thanksgiving happening?
Next week.
Well, hopefully, yeah, I want to wish people happy Thanksgiving, you know, if you're into that kind of thing, there are probably some other holidays in there too. Anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. And Counselor McCruss.
Thank you, President. It's nice having council members elected here, Shawna, she's always enjoying. Hi, Boy Scouts, thank you for coming. I used to be the daisies leader with my daughters when they were in Girl Scouts, so, yeah. So, Saturdays, there's our Libertarian meetings, they're going very well. I just want everybody to know, they're open to everyone, you don't have to be a Libertarian, you don't have to be, you know, be a Democrat, Republican, unregistered, independent, we don't care, I'll work with you. Our whole goal is just to have the community come together, work together, and, you know, have less government, have more people, more hands, make later work, you know, and that's how we can really help our community. We're working, still working on the halfway house, we still have that up and going, working on a community center, what else are we working on? We're working on coming up with some agenda for the courts because we have a lot of misrepresentation, especially with men and men of color. We are also working on DSS, truthfully, I think we should completely evaluate DSS because it's completely terrible in how it builds our communities, it's destroying our communities. This isn't something that's going to be easy, it's something that'll take, you know, 20, 30 years, 40, I figure I'd have the time. So, and then just, you know, I have two nonprofits, my whole goal is to not to meet nonprofits in another 20 or 30 years. The way that they have grants right now completely pushes nonprofits to play politics, you remember, play one side or the other because it is only a dual, dual operation, I can't, but, you say you can only do Republican or Democrat, and it's pushing political, political issues on nonprofits, and having grants, everything goes through nonprofits for, I mean, like, we have to go and vote for our grants anyway, so you're voting to please politicians, and it should never be, pleasing politicians should never be part of a nonprofit, and I think that grants really do myself how that is, I would rather see taxes reduced and put back into people's pockets so we can help the nonprofits that are actually really doing their work. Now, there are good nonprofits, but there's also bad nonprofits, a lot of national nonprofits that aren't representing anybody, that they, they quit, they're helping such and such many people, but where's the follow-through? How are they actually helping other than just giving a handout? America needs to stop giving handouts, we need to stop having people work, we need to start having people stand up, I don't mind a hand up, so you can stand up, but we're not here to give up. We need to start building our families, and our families aren't going to be able to build themselves if we keep handing out to them. This is something that I keep coming into, like, oh, what are you going to give us, what are you going to give us? Help yourself, what are you going to give yourself? We need to start really pushing people, because it's not America's job to stop the poor, the hunger, to stop poverty in the communities, it's families. Starts at home, starts with your neighbor, we need to kind of go back to the basics. So, I am glad to have that, like I said, it's the Libertarian meeting, but you don't have to be a Libertarian to join us, and it's Saturdays at 6:00 p.m. Hit us up on Facebook if you want, Danny Cross on Facebook, write a message. With that, I guess, just have a good night, and thankful for everything we have, you know, thankful that you're here, have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Counselor. I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.